We're gonna go ahead and call meeting order at six oh o'clock. Uh, we'll call please. Pasco?
Here.
Star?
Here.
Deloitte?
Here.
Jefferson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Thank you. Let's do it. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Next, I'd like to acknowledge the Meetings Act poster that's posted by the South entrance. One D adoption of agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda. Sorry.
Any discussion? Call for a vote please. Motion carried, order zero. Approval of consent agenda items.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda. Sorry.
Any discussion? Call for a vote please. Motion carried, order zero. All right, let's go down to the sheriff's report.
Oh, right there. All right. Um, I have a whole lot. I think we just brought up that uh, the bid had taken place and Riley's coming back. I think everybody knows Riley, right? Um, so he's having another baby. So this will be a good spot for him. And then Terry's coming back during the day, TJ, and then I'll be here on the other side, so.
How does that work? When you say there's bids and stuff, I guess I've never understood, like, known how that works in the background. You guys put bids into where you wanna, what jurisdictions you wanna cover, or how does that work? What do you doc, what do you mean when you say that?
Yeah, good question. So we bring it up about every six months. Every six months, the PD does every year, um, we do every six months. And based on our patrol spots, our vacancies, uh, we have five vacancies right now, so they kind of spread them out and block them out in courts here. But basically Sergeant Corralik calls us at eight AM, they go down the list based on seniority, and you tell them where you wanna work. And when it gets down to the last couple of people, about a lot of options left. So unfortunately, those options are usually waiverly. Um, and Hickman, but this next bid, you're gonna have between TJ's thirty-five years and I just struck twenty-five years tomorrow, cool, twenty-five years of service anniversary, and then uh, um, and then Riley's been on for four, three, four or five years now, so. He had quite a bit of experience. I think he had about, what, uh, sixty-five years of experience. He has about two. So two or three years of experience now, so.
Interesting.
Uh, we're excited. I'll come back. You Riley enjoyed my little thing, my little thing, so what's that? My little thing with the show.
Nope, nope, nope.
I just looked at Dave when he opened, like, ah, what's Dave gonna say, but no, um.
What, what gets the, what gets the, what's the prime spot? What are people, like, the seniority, the, the one gets snagged first?
It was another, the, great question. There is no prime spot.
Okay.
Um, it all depends on, what's great about the six-month bid process that the sheriff's had forever, is that it allows deputies seasonally to make adjustments to their schedule with what works them. There's a couple of gentlemen that love coaching baseball, so they'll go to third shift maybe, they're, you know, they're, so they can coach and stuff, and then maybe swap or, you know, we've got guys that have been veterans or gals for a long time, that just works for daycare. Um, second shift works for me, um, with my scheduled Thursday, Fridays, Saturdays off, my daughter dances, and so she dances on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sundays travel, when we travel, so it just works out great. So there's no prime spot in fact. There was two or three years ago where I think Deputy Chance, been here quite a, quite a bit longer than me, he was the last day shift bid, and he been on for eight, nine years. Um, day shift with Thursday, Friday, Saturdays off this year, I think the most senior deputy of the four or five has maybe a year on, year and a half on. There's five deputies on day shift, which would be great for them as a team working through things together with the new sergeant, that should, you know, professionally developed and, uh, good captain, that they'll be able to work together as a team and grow, um, professionally and personally, so that's kind of exciting for them. It all depends on what works for their lifestyle.
Interesting.
That's great information. And happy norser, congratulations.
Thank you. It's kind of, it's flown by. It's been wild, so.
Hey, Jake, stick with us.
I will, I'll do what I can, but yeah, I found a couple of pictures when I was twenty, just turned twenty-one years old in the police department, and believe it or not, I was wearing a vest, but I looked about as skinny as a hen. You know, hey, happens to the best of us, so, yeah. I did not have hair. I did not. But no, I appreciate the opportunity. TJ loves, enjoys working here. I can speak for him on that. Um, and obviously Riley's coming back. That's my third year now here, start, I think, so I appreciate it, and so look forward to continuing to grow with him.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You bet. We're in love.
All right, all the comments, is there anyone here uh, that would make, like to make a comment on a non-agenda item? All right, seeing them, we will move on to claims for payment.
I move to approve claims for payment in the amount of four hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety dollars and ninety cents.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Call for a vote please. Motion carried, order zero. Treasure report and budget and expense report.
Move to approve the treasure and budget reports. Sorry.
Any discussion? Call for a vote please. Motion carried, order zero. Uh, seven B, consideration of revolu- resolution twenty-five, twenty-five, adopting or revising employee handbook.
There it is. Uh, I move to approve, uh, resolution twenty-five, twenty-five, adopting and revising the employee handbook.
Sorry.
Discussion?
Um, this is in addition, we are adding the fire department administrative assistant job description. Um, so once we have approval for the job description, we will post the job, um, available for applicants. Um, this person is gonna be a part-time, a permanent part-time position, um, that will work at the fire station. Um, will help, um, support the fire chief. Um, we're gonna have them working on, there's a lot of reporting and information that needs to be entered into applicable software. Um, so they'll be doing that, um, and gathering other reports. Um, there's some, um, reports that get submitted to the state and everything. They will answer to the fire chief. Um, it is a permanent part-time position, so they are eligible for, um, paid time off and, um, holidays, um, and they can contribute to the retirement plan as well. And the city would match, um, a portion of that. After an introductory period. Um, that is one thing that we are adding also to the code inspector job description. We did not, we left off the, um, line that said that they were eligible for paid time off, um, and the retirement benefits. So we added that to the job description for the code inspector as well.
Anything else? All right, call for a vote please. Motion carried, order zero. Consideration of first reading ordinance twenty-five, twenty-three, amending chapter ninety of the municipal code relating to leisure and recreation park hours.
I move to approve first reading of ordinance twenty-five, twenty-four.
Twenty-three.
Twenty?
Twenty-three. There's twenty-three and twenty-four.
Oh, I went ahead. Sorry. I move to approve consideration of first reading of ordinance twenty-five, twenty-three. Sorry.
Um, oh, yes. An ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, amending chapter ninety of the Waverly Municipal Code relating to leisure and recreation, parks, hours. Um, so a little bit about this, um, the city, uh, and the Park and Rec Committee worked with, um, Deputy Brownell to talk about, um, some ways to improve safety in our parks. And so one of the things that was recommended was, um, adjusting the hours that it was lawful to be inside the parks. Um, they were, it was previously at eleven PM, um, we did, were asking to change that to ten-thirty PM instead. Um, that will allow on the evenings when, or in the summer, when the pool closes at ten o'clock at night, um, that will allow all of the staff and patrons of the pool to get out of the park, um, and then nobody should be in the park after that.
My only question is, why is it, and, and it's chapter ninety, that's chapter one thirty-one, why is it twice? It's, it's a little, we're a little differently, but the gist is the same. Parks are closed. Do you know?
I can't tell you that for sure, except for, um, in the other one, it is, they're talking about misdemeanors specifically.
Oh.
And this is in the chapter that is just referring to parks and recreation. I'm not saying that we couldn't get rid of possibly one, but you also don't wanna eliminate something in parks.
Sure, sure. And like I said, they, they basically read the same perception of misdemeanor, and this one talks more about activity, the other one talks more about, like, specifically people being in the park.
Right, yeah.
My concern at six AM is that I think it should be a little bit earlier, honestly. I know there used to be a, a workout group that would do park stuff, and I think they started at like five-thirty, where they're like, um, who can't, it's more of a sleeping time.
Where people like to walk.
And I think that actually did get brought up during the meeting, is that there's some concern that some folks walk as early as five AM.
So I guess that would be my concern.
Do we have any concerns with the beginning hours?
I do not.
The, it's the, the dusk hour.
Let's get people home hours.
Yes. Gotcha. And since this is the first reading, if, if we want, we can make some changes to be presented at the, for the second reading.
I know my wife's on, my wife's going early to walk.
Yeah.
So, so I would change it to five AM, or straight up five o'clock. So would we, I move to amend. Is that what I have to do?
Um, you can, yes, you can, yes, we can do that. Take a motion, okay?
Or what else?
Well, I was gonna say, otherwise we would just rewrite it.
Okay.
For the second presentation and, and set, you know, take the advice and.
I don't know what everybody else's thoughts are, but that would be my.
If you are going to suspend the three rules and move it, or the three readings, and move it to first and final, the third and final, I'm sorry, then you would wanna amend it today, so we don't have reading.
Either way, we're gonna get changed.
So, it depends, are you going three readings or not? That's, that, I think that's probably the difference. Or do we get it patrolling sooner? That's.
I think the park committee would be open, obviously, they discussed.
They discussed it, yeah, and were very interested in moving this, this forward, and we're pretty much in the management sitting in the talks.
And I think their bigger concern was the night.
The night, definitely.
That it is, but when we're gonna open in the morning.
The big thing that you brought up was, they wanted to make sure that the lifeguards could close the pool down and get out of the park before.
Being in violation, yeah.
Being in violation, because we certainly don't want them, because they're just trying to get help from work to be.
Right. We don't want them to get in trouble.
In trouble.
Okay, so I move to amend the motion, um, by changing it to five AM. Is that what I need to say?
Second.
Okay. So let's call for a vote on the amendment.
Motion carried, order zero.
Now, do you want to move to suspend the rules and move to third and final, you can.
Yeah, I, I can do it all like that. But I guess I don't wanna speak for everybody, but, I mean, the sooner, the better, although we are going into fall, so it's probably a little bit less of a issue that, you know.
That might be, that might be so less that people can get in there earlier and walk, but what if you told?
So, does anybody wanna make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Give me a second though.
I'll second.
Okay, let's call for a vote on amending, or suspending the three rules and moving to third and final reading.
Motion carried, order zero.
Okay, so now, let's call for a vote on
Third and final.
Third and final, the ordinance.
Five AM to ten-thirty.
Yeah, uh, it's the way around, the closed ten.
Close, ten-thirty.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Motion carried, order zero.
Okay, so now, A B is consideration of first reading ordinance twenty-five, twenty-four, amending chapter one thirty-one of the Waverly Municipal Code relating to miscellaneous misdemeanors, park hours.
I'm going to approve first reading of ordinance twenty-five, twenty-four.
Sorry.
Okay. An ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, amending chapter one thirty-one of the Waverly Municipal Code relating to miscellaneous misdemeanors, park hours.
Okay, so I make a motion that we change it to five, ten-thirty PM to five AM.
So the park will be closed.
So that's when the park will be closed, so. So let's.
Any discussion on that?
All right, let's call for a vote on
We need a sec.
Day, second. Amending five AM, closing, or opening at five AM.
Motion carried, order zero.
Now, would anybody like to suspend?
I'll make a motion to suspend.
Suspend the three rules and move to third and final reading.
Second.
Call for a vote, huh?
Mayor.
Yes.
Public comment?
You've just enacted, or preparing to enact a new law, punishable by whatever's in there, without going through the requisite three readings. It seems this council and previous councils become under a scrutiny for not being transparent enough on the process for creating new restrictions, rules, regulations. Whereas the impact on this would probably be minor, it didn't, it doesn't feel right when the city, normal city process for three readings, which allows publication of the minutes, to, um, shortcut that, particularly one it could resolve, presumably, I mean, when would this take effect? I didn't read down to the bottom of it.
Well, immediately.
Yeah.
Immediately, so, as soon as this meeting is over, something could be a potential crime, um, that wasn't when we started the meeting.
Thank you.
And I'm not opposed to restrictions, but I, I am, I get concerned when there are provisions for public disclosure, public discussion, and when those provisions are not followed or bypassed.
Thank you. Okay, so, so we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading. Okay. So that's, any discussion on that?
You know, you make a good point. The, the first one I didn't mind at all, because it's just an hours change. This one does carry the weight of a class one misdemeanor. And I do wonder if this deserves at least a second reading, to give folks a chance to be like, oh, they did what on the first reading? Could be a crime. That is a good point. And I have done that, I mean, I, I have been against moving some
We have.
Most of third, and, and, and we've moved a lot of them to.
I never thought of that, yeah.
But the misdemeanor does kind of stand out on this one.
That's a good point.
Has the signage been changed at all?
Yeah, that was a good question. The signage, if there's any signage that needs to be changed.
There are.
There are, yes. How long will it take to change the signage?
We can't change it until anything's passed.
Right.
So, it's not, it's not on order.
Pass it and enact it, and then we'll change it, right? So like,
It'll, it'll.
In theory, if we did approve it tonight and somebody was in the park after ten-thirty.
The signage is different. And that's gonna be any night that we do this, right?
Correct.
Any night that it's approved, and there's hours changing.
Correct.
There's maybe a.
Maybe it's not going out after this meeting to change the sign.
Correct.
Correct. We will have to order, more than likely what will happen is we will order vinyl stickers that will go over the current park signs, and so we will work with the local vendor to get the, the little stickers printed. So there may be a little bit of a late time of, a few days, probably, to get those printed.
I know when Jason came in park, talked to the Parks and Rec Committee about this, this was more of a concern about being able to afford somebody in the park to have like a discussion with them. Um, not necessarily give them a class one dis- misdemeanor for being in the park, all right, that's always up to the officer on patrol that night, but.
And I would say, if I can briefly, that although I don't ever imagine, this is a different motivation for public safety. Um, we can educate and enforce enforcement. Uh, to me, it would be an extremely rare event, but yet even under class one misdemeanor, then that would be put in the city's hands, and it'd be up to the city to actually file charges or pursue charges, not the law enforcement officer. For instance, there's no state statute for urinating in public. If someone is caught urinating in public behind the Russell's Market, it might have been a call for service today that happened last night. That's up to the city to pursue charges, not the law enforcement officer. So that's maybe just a piece of information.
I, I guess from my perspective, and after going to the Parks and Rec, it doesn't feel like we're moving the hours back dramatically.
And specifically on this one, it's only an hour and a half, because it already was at five, I believe. So we're actually not changing nothing on this one.
Correct.
This one, they didn't match. Correct.
So the only thing we're actually technically changing on this one is going from midnight backwards to ten-thirty.
Ten-thirty.
Yeah. It got dark at like, a little after seven last night, so I guess my question would be, what is somebody doing, like, or, what are we doing in the park at midnight? Tell midnight anyways, you know?
Nothing good.
You know what they say.
So now it's nothing happens after ten-thirty.
After ten. All right, you, are you ready to call for a vote on waiving, suspending the rules and moving to third and final? Okay, please call for a vote.
Motion carried, three to zero.
Third and one.
Okay.
I thought you were.
Okay, so let's.
Now we're gonna vote on third and final.
Okay, you vote on, now the vote is for third and final, moving this, moving this into Call for a vote please.
Motion carried, order zero.
Okay.
We will get right on getting the sticker orders.
sticker order. All right, let's move to consideration of purchase of safety stairs for wastewater treatment facility in the mountain, not to exceed twelve thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars.
I move to approve purchase of safety stairs for the wastewater treatment facility in the mountain, not to exceed twelve thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
This was in our budget.
Correct.
Yeah. These were the super stairs.
They need, they need them.
Talk about, yeah, public safety and employee safety.
Definitely not public safety.
Because somebody.
Yeah, I hope you guys don't have to go walk us down the square for me.
I've gone over there. I knew it.
All right, call for a vote please.
Motion carried, order zero. Consideration of purchase of the ladder for well number seven.
I move to approve purchase of the ladder for well number seven in an amount not to exceed six thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Also in budget? And safety.
Same sword.
Okay, call for a vote please.
Motion carried, order zero. Consideration of interlocal agreement with Lincoln Fire and Rescue for emergency medical services from September one through August thirty-one, twenty-six, and not not to exceed six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars, sixty cents.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement with Lincoln Fire and Rescue for emergency medical services from September first, twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty-six.
Sorry.
Discussion?
Is there any discussion amongst the group around the five percent per year for ten years, um, trying to do anything with that, or?
Yeah, so, I was gonna say, Robin went to the mutual aid association.
Yeah, I'm actually secretary treasurer for Lancaster County Mutual Aid. We had asked to see the LFR agreement like, three months prior already, and all we could, all we were told was it was sitting in our legal department chat. So they just pretty much came and dropped the agreement, uh, and then emailed to all the rural departments. We discussed it mutually, there was a lot of angst over the fact that it was gonna be a ten-year agreement, I believe, now, it was a five percent increase each year, so we did send an email back to them, and basically they said, uh, we're not willing to negotiate, and, uh, I guess I won't say the term that we would usually say about it, but they're not willing to negotiate, and they say, uh, ten years, five percent increase each year. And I, I will say this, I have learned in the last day or two that two departments are not going to sign it. Uh, Malcolm's not gonna sign it, then Southwest will not sign it, and till, uh, hopefully, LFR would come back to it with a better rate or a better agreement.
So in the interim, we don't sign this, and, uh, they don't come out from mutual aid.
I would say that they would still, uh, I would say they would still respond to us, I, I wouldn't be able to tell you what the, what the rate would be, but I would hope that, that even if the city council approved this tonight, that, that if they came back with a lower rate for the other two departments, it would be for all departments.
You would hope.
I don't know.
I would hope, but.
And this is, and this is ten years.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So the only thing that I will say is that, so in item number ten, it says, the fee for each successive year thereafter shall be increased by five percent unless otherwise agreed upon by the fire district and the city, and the city being the city of Lincoln, um, payments shall be due as follows. Um, so there is the unless otherwise agreed upon.
LUPA.
I wouldn't call it a LUPA, with the clause, and then it says maybe they would be willing to talk, you know, next year, or something to that effect, um.
And we have not met, and let's see, we meet this coming Monday night as a mutual aid organization again, so I'm sure we'll get discussed at the meeting too again, so.
Have we previously, have they previously charged us more each year?
There's always been an increase, but never, never, well, it's always been a, uh, one-year agreement, and there's always been an increase, and I think the increase is about closer to maybe like, what, three percent, haven't they been?
They kind of, yeah, a while longer.
Yeah, it kind of depends, but.
There's been nothing said, so.
Yeah, but this time it was a total shocker, that it was ten years and a five percent increase each year.
Rob, do you think it'd be best for us to make post-hormones and tell you how to be reading?
We, I mean, we try to use Southeastern ALS at first, it just depends on what the call is, if it, if it ends up being a call where, uh, it's an echo response and CPR in progress, I'm gonna call for LFR anyway. Uh, the, the thing about LFR right now is, there's several days where they have no ambulances available just because their home call volumes. So they're like status, I think they call it status zero or status red, and they're, they're pulling actual reserve ambulances out. So even, even if we have a bad call, it's not guaranteed we're gonna get a, a medicate from them right away anyway.
You'd get a paramedic on the menu, but to get a box there.
Yeah, yeah, it might not happen. Might not happen.
But if they do come, we're getting five percent increase for the next ten years.
Yes.
So. So we either postpone it or vote it down, or, or agree to move forward with it. What are our options?
So if we voted in, we're locked in for five percent of the year?
Ten years. Unless they make changes.
What, what are Malcolm and the other community, what are their plans now that they're not gonna sign it?
Uh, I have not had that conversation with Adam or with Cory.
And it's a lock-in for ten years.
If, if this, if, if postponing it for two more weeks to continue having these conversations and discussions does not hurt our citizens due to response times, it's based on call volume and all those kinds of things, then I would suggest we wait two more weeks and see what happens. Um, by signing it, we're no longer negotiating, we accepted it, right? Um, so that would be my suggestion, as long as it does not hurt our citizens and our.
It, it should not hurt us, I mean, I, I would say you're, you're fine if we're funding it for two weeks.
Have we had a call since September in the last?
Yeah, an LFR call or?
On that, uh,
An LFR meeting.
Then we're calling.
Uh, ALS call. Have we had one that we had to call LFR? Have we had one that we had to call LFR for?
Uh, you're.
Since September first?
Not specifically LFR. We do, we do use Southeast for the LFR for ALS because that's a much cheaper rate.
Because technically right now, we're not in an agreement.
When did our other contract end?
If it ended on September first?
There's been several years where they've gotten these to us late and we've operated without one for many times.
And we probably are just operating on the previous.
Yes.
So if we postpone, I would assume that they're just gonna continue letting us operate on the previous agreement until we make a decision. Because we're already a month and a half out of the contract. So I don't know that there's that urgency to sign the contract either because we're technically not in the contract right now. I wonder what they would charge if they, if we had a call today.
Very likely to be this amount.
Yeah, more than likely would be the new amount.
Okay. So it wouldn't necessarily be out either way.
Who pays for that charge? Does it go to the person? Who's getting picked up?
Yeah, the patient pays.
We, what we do is on an ALS call, we would bill our ALS rate. So I believe that rate's twelve hundred dollars an hour. Roughly twelve hundred dollars. And then, uh, LFR, if we, if if we call for them and they ride with us, they will bill us the six hundred and seventy-six dollars. If we call them, they come out and we let them transport, then they bill the patient. We don't owe them a dime. Which we've done that too before.
Thanks for postponing too then.
Because they're gonna, they're gonna, ultimately, they're gonna bill us either way. Like, they're gonna get paid.
Yes.
They're most likely gonna come and then they're gonna get paid either way.
Yes. And ironically, we had a call within the last week or so where LFR got dispatched to our, our district without us requesting them. Yeah, so we're, we're, we're gonna do that one too.
Would postponing to our next meeting be enough time? Your meetings in between?
We meet this coming Monday night, yes.
Why would we postpone this item until our next uh, business meeting?
That's like a.
That is on October twenty eighth. Okay, in discussion?
Do we have a meeting time to be, and we're gonna talk to them? A lot?
Yeah. Robin will talk.
You'll talk to them, but.
We will discuss it again at, uh, Monday night at our mutual aid.
By way of.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, the, yeah, with three departments, departments not agreeing with it, it will be discussed.
And they will be there?
Yes.
Okay.
How many departments attend that?
Uh, there's thirteen rural departments and it's fairly well attended by everyone.
Great. Let's call for a vote please. On postponing the item until October twenty eighth.
Motion carried four to zero.
All right, let's do consideration of purchase of a snowplow and hitch.
I move to approve the purchase of a snowplow and hitch from Midwest Services and Sales Company in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-six cents.
Same.
Uh, discussion?
This also budget item.
It is, yes. Uh, yes it is? Yep.
No, I'm sorry. I was getting ready to discuss it.
This is why I just will guarantee no snow this year.
Yeah, right.
I say postpone.
Yeah, let's postpone that and see if snow.
Yeah, okay.
All right, call for a vote please. On.
On what?
What? What's, uh, vehicle is this?
It's on the Hino dump truck. So it's one of our new, our new dump truck that does not have a plow on the front of it, so. All right, call for a vote please. Motion carried four to zero. Consideration of bid from Violia for Aqua Ray forty HO Generation Two Vertical Lamp System.
I hate to repeat that. You do this so well. I move to approve, uh, bid from Violia for Aqua Ray forty HO Generation Two Vertical Lamp System for the wastewater treatment facility in an amount not to exceed two hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Same.
Discussion?
Another budget item.
It is.
Do you? I don't wanna put you on the spot. Do we, do we have a elevator pitch of what this is?
Um, sure. It's, it's a, a UV system, so the UV takes out certain properties out of the um, wastewater effluent that comes through it and makes it safe to discharge it into the creek. So, um, and this is a system, so we have two sides of our wastewater treatment plant, two ditches that run. And so this will, um, be able to handle the capacity if we get to the point where we have to run both sides of the wastewater ditch at the same time, it'll be able to disinfect the water. Is that high level enough?
That's great.
And we actually had three hundred thousand budget.
Did it turn into drinking water?
Yeah. Well, not, well, I mean, you can, you could if you want to.
Right. They say you can. And ours, ours current one is obsolete, so we have to upgrade. And we're not many things are ninety-two thousand dollars under budget.
I love that.
So, all right, call for a vote please.
Motion carried four to zero. All right, let's go to committee reports. Human Services, Parks and Rec, Allison.
All right, it's kind of, oh, I didn't realize this was double sided.
You were about to say it was short.
Oh, actually, I was gonna say it was kind of long. Um, let me see if I can run through this quickly. Um, so flag football's last day is on Saturday. That will be the Super Bowl. Um, soccer is ending on the twenty-third, which is the following week. Uh, women's volleyball starts tomorrow. There are actual seven teams that are signed up for that, so that's really good. Um, and then registration for Waverly Rec baseball and softball started on October first. They did plant fifteen trees to replace the green ash that were removed. Um, let's see, field one and two, they've done some treatments for the weeds in there. The leak under the concrete landing to the guardhouse in the aquatic center is going should have been repaired yesterday. And then the pool manager, we're transitioning this position from seasonal to full-time and adding a marketing and rec sports supervisor portion in addition to the pool season. Um, so that'll be good. Uh, Wayne Lawson got load, it looks like. Anything else that you guys want me to announce?
I think they had a really good discussion around, you know, fees and charges for teams. I'm not sure the final, final resolution was ever landed on, but they had a really good discussion and really appreciate, um, John and from.
Ah, yes. Yeah.
Riptide represented, being there. Um, he was able to share a lot of really good information about not only the club in general, but also just how the clubs kind of operate, where they play their games, where they practice, league fees. Just a good overview to kind of give, I, I think, everybody on Parks and Rec Committee as well as Dave and myself over there, a, a much better idea of kind of how it's all working now because it's youth sports continues to evolve really quickly and the way they're set up, what they're charging, um, it just, it's changing all the time. So we just gotta clear out a way, I really think we came away with that meeting is how can we utilize our fields? We have these great fields here. How can we get more utilization out of them? Um, and then they had a good discussion about the hours for the parking. We had a good discussion before there. Pretty unanimous about that. Had a little bit of discussion about maybe other ways to generate, um, some money for Parks and Rec, really that'd be through sponsorships and advertising and things like that. Not sure there was any uh, reservation.
No.
That was one of them.
No. We did approve the, um, refund on a form to use for the bench donations and, and tables.
And the standard size issue.
Yeah.
Design.
So there are benches and tables and the plaque hitting too.
Yeah.
That was also so that people wouldn't just go, yeah, we want one for the plaques. That's great.
Yeah.
Ours isn't this big. Yeah. That's good.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, Public Works, you're in.
Um, Public Works continues to mow, um, because we continue to get rain. Um, they unhooked the sludge rest. They have its internal parts repaired, um, and then get that done. Had a meeting about intersection approach on one hundred and forty-ninth street in Kennelworth. It was evidently pouring in rain, so it was delaminating, um, for by Waverly Ridge Development. They located the entire Waverly Ridge subdivision for natural gas installation. They started to flush hydrants. They have about a hundred left. Sought the streets for the marching band parade, um, which I heard went really, really well. I think they had a good attendance both from bands and from people watching the parade. Meeting with MBA poultry about water flow problems, um, knowing that they're using a four-inch line to feed two other four-inch lines, so they must be a little short on flow coming through there.
They're using their capacity.
Yes. Put the sander and plow on the dump truck. Um, sewer jetted, um, looking for root intrusion on the older mains. Uh, waiting to hear back from Windstream, Connecticut about a fall line that was bored through the sewer main on path one hundred and forty-fifth and Haven. Sounds like a bad day.
Yeah, not a good day.
Um, four new concrete bays on an old headstone of over seventy-five years old with the request of the family, um, over at the cemetery. Starting to assemble a salt storage cover. I think we approved that at our last meeting, so they've already started to assemble that. Get the block in there, we've been bored. They pecked up a dead deer along Highway six. I gotta imagine that must have been city.
Thank you.
Yeah. It was over by Mr. Amoros, I think.
Great, thank you. That should save, save the. Ten seed Public Health.
Uh, during Fire Prevention Week, the crews made seven fire prevention visits to daycares and to Villa Marie School uh, in the district and talked to the kids, got pictures taken and took trucks out for those folks for fire prevention. Uh, also took part at Eek at the Creek, uh, at the Camp Thresher, Camp Creek Thresher's annual, uh, event. Uh, good turnout. Always fun to have the truck out there as well. Uh, did some apparatus checks, um, last week and this week, um, did some training of some of the new AMT system. Doing some demonstrations on that proficiency, so that's good. Um, and then you're gonna be attending a workshop. What's THIRA? T-H-I-R-A.
This today?
That was today. Yeah, the THIRA, it stands for Threat Hazards Identification Risk Assessment. So there was about a hundred people in attendance there today and it's, uh, LFR was there, Emergency Management, um, wow, University, Bryan Hospital, and so uh, they actually gave us like three different scenarios. One was a tornado, uh, one was an ice storm and then one was, uh, hazardous materials leak west of UNL. So they give you these and then you have to sit there and tell them what resources you're gonna need and how you're gonna mitigate it and things like that. So, uh, they'll take it back and do some final report, I think, that will, that will ultimately be shared with everybody that was there today.
That's it. Anything you'd like to add? Uh, ten D Physical and Economic Development, Dave.
So, to the right of your coat.
Oh. I do have something for you. Uh, new business. Spot spirit, new owners are Cali and Scott Youngers. Was that how you say, Youngers? They began on September eighth. Uh, code, a powder coating facility has been added to the Empire Campus and is located at one twenty-nine oh one North Hundred Forty-Eighth Street, which is north of Waverly Road and just south of the City Tree and Brush Lot. And next meeting is Monday at five PM here in Council Changers.
The CRA.
CRA.
Did they get their reflections too?
Um, I'm, I would assume Megan did the, this one time get their liquor license? Their final, I haven't heard anything else other than their, I don't know, whatever it's called, the temporary.
I just get concerned with the mess they got going over there that is gonna have to trickle down to folks who are applying. Hopefully not, but they have to back up there. So they'll have to operate under the temporary.
Yeah.
Because I don't think they have a, I mean, I don't, I think they only have one member of the commission currently. It's a three-person commission and a director. And currently only have one member.
Interesting.
Yeah. That's messy.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. All that stuff.
Um, so Robin and I have met, um, and Megan met with us as well last week when we talked about some of the municipal code, um, changes that we need to implement, um, uh, for the different levels within the fire department. And so we'll have something to present to all of you within the next couple, probably at the next meeting, um, for those changes. All the department heads are working on new projects already for the new budget year, so, um, that's going well. Um, you know, like Tracy's one for the UV system that's gonna, that has a lead time of, you know, six or seven months. So, um, that's why we're trying to jump in on a lot of these projects to get things going. Um, so we'll have some planning stuff that'll come probably before you in the next couple of meetings as well. Um, one of the last things, um, November eleventh is our next meeting, which is, um, also Veterans Day. So, uh, we need to discuss where you possibly would want to move that meeting to. Would you want to move it to the Monday before the tenth or on Wednesday the? Any?
So what works better for you guys, Monday or Wednesday?
Wednesday, I now have volleyball games.
Wednesday I have a middle.
Oh, yeah.
It's huge.
So Monday?
Monday would be fine for me.
That's it?
That's who got enough to count for me.
Yeah, we would have a day earlier.
We have the, the twenty eighth, then it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Monday works for me.
I have a haircut on, I always get a haircut on the campus. Some might not look as good.
Well, we'll take that into consideration when we have a meeting. All right, well, we will change the, um, the agendas on, the application on.
Six o'clock on the campus.
Yep, six o'clock.
From the build that they.
Yeah. My name is under my gun. We can do that. I mean, yeah, we can do that. All right, Dave, do you have anything else for us?
Yes, I'm a to enter a extended session, to protect the public interest, to proceed and to discuss negotiation strategy relating to possible real estate acquisitions.
Um. Second.
Call for a vote please.
Motion carried four to zero.
I would give you name.
They'd be able to.
Dave, Jason.
Take care.
You're ready.
Two minutes.
Hold on.
Come fast.
Hold on a minute.
Are you, are you able to stop this camera?
All right, we will enter an executive session at six forty.